Yeah.
Coming over.
Somebody must go like this. In your.
He's got. Four thirty and we start a meeting right now, study meeting here, West Valley City. On Tuesday, October four twenty twenty two at four thirty P M. And we are in a multi purpose room. The anchor location here thirty six, I mean thirty six hundred South Constitution Boulevard. West Valley City, Utah, and A four one one I. And our council, we are here, four council members are here and Mayor K and Land and Jake. On Zoom. And Admin is here with us too. Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me to conduct a meeting today. I don't know what time you have over there, but probably six in the morning. Is that right?
No, it's nine thirty Wednesday morning.
Gross, three hours.
Yeah.
Okay. We say that I know what time for your family, but you. Spending time with us and appreciate it very much. Approve of minutes. So September twenty seven twenty twenty two, we need a motion and a second for this one.
Motion to approve the September twenty seventh study meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you well, and thank you Scott, we have a motion, have a second. So all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, good, the vote was unanimous, thank you so much. Item number four, I hear regular city council meeting and regular R D A meeting and regular B A meeting. It's gonna follow up some time tonight after our regular meeting. Number five, we'll turn over to.
Order they'll be in R D A and then.
Yeah, yeah, it's true, right? Yeah, you're right. The next item gonna be Steve Patrick here, but before. Steve Patrick is taking over podium, alternate title would do. When pile, you have anything to say before it taking over?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, good, Steve Patrick. Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and good afternoon, council. Just have a brief update on this item, so this was an item that was studied last week. So just wanted to update the council on a couple of items, so I did get a chance to talk with the applicant. You'll recall, we reviewed this table last week. The one change that the applicant wanted me to point out is. In option two, his intent was, although it wasn't reflected in the document he submitted. If you look at the first row there for allowed materials. Under the second option, his intent was that that would actually meet our previous standard. So it would just be the the materials would be brick, stone or fiber cement siding. So that was really a typo on his part, so that was one clarification he wanted to make. And then the other was during the last week or during last week's conversation, the council asked if he would be willing to negotiate. And he said, yes, and so if there are specific items that the the council would like to request the applicant consider. He's he is, or he did say he's open to negotiation, so he did hear the the conversation last week. And that that's my update for today.
Any question for Steve Patrick?
So what what does that mean, he's willing to negotiate?
If if the council had like specific items that you would like me to go back to him and say, yeah, we really think this, you know, this item needs to be changed. Or or or, you know, multiple items need to be changed, I can relay that to him and see if that's something he's willing to to change or not.
Is there anything you're willing to negotiate, Lars?
So Steve, when. When they come in with the request for a zone change to residential estate. Do we do, does our planning department say? Well, we require a development agreement and and we are looking for this, the previous housing standards. Is that what you say, or?
Yes, in fact, so the ordinance requires a development agreement. And I, the way we've been explaining that is this, you know, the standard will share within the previous standards. So this is what we've been doing in in our recent agreements. Now, because of state, the state law change, I can't say you have, you have to do these standards. But we try to emphasize that this is what this is what the council is 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 really looking for. So to be, yeah, that that is the direction we give them.
For me personally. I don't, I don't feel that unless we are willing to back off the previous housing standards. For all. Rezones moving forward. I don't think we should make exceptions, it's like. We're saying, here's a standard for someone, here's a different standard for you, here's a different standard, I don't think that's fair.
That's what legislature has told us. Because they didn't think it was fair.
They didn't think it was fair that we wanted more than they wanted.
That we wanted what?
More than they wanted.
Well, I hate to guess what the legislature. Wanted, but.
Oh, you done love?
Oh, maybe.
Can you elaborate a little bit about he willing to negotiate, what does that mean? Can you explain to us?
Yeah, so he he has these two proposals.
Because because what we talked about that we discussed about last time.
Right.
So can you explain a little bit more about that for us, please?
Sure, so I I think the way he he heard the conversation is there were, there were a number of things that were discussed. But there there wasn't at least the the I heard like clear direction on, we want, you know, we want these, these three or these two things changed. And so if if the council has again. Like two or three things or or more that you feel like need to be changed in either of these options. I can go back to the applicant and say, are you willing to change these items? And and see, see what he says. But again, of course, the council still has the option, as we discussed last week, to simply deny this change as well. So I just want to make sure that's clear as well.
Here, I got a follow up question with you. Last I felt last not fail, he mentioned about three car garage. Is that he gonna do that?
Right now, under this this proposal. It's not included, but again, if that, I can ask that question specifically, if that's a real change he's willing to make.
Yeah, that's the definition of willingness to to be go say, yeah.
Mayor Ling has a comment when.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, if you, we, you know, we occupy in this right here, this room, so you know, be occupied. So if you see something up there, just please tell us, okay, okay, go ahead.
Mayor Ling just had a comment that she'd like to make.
Mayor. Thanks, Nicole. So I would like the previous housing standards to be applied to this application. I don't even think the negotiation. I mean, if the builder cannot build to these standards, I wouldn't be willing to vote for this at all. Our previous standards are what we wanted, we don't have much property left in the city. Our intent previously was to have the nicer homes. For those looking to move up to a nicer situation instead of having to move somewhere else to get that. And Newton Farms proved that there's plenty of people that want it. And so I wouldn't be comfortable with voting for anything except our previous housing standards on this application.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for saying that, appreciate that. It looked like we have three right now, I think we have more than three, you loves and me very much, and probably Scott and. I will too, so I don't know about Jay Don, but I think very much. We are standing by. And that's maybe the message you can send it back to him, let him know.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Scott, did you want to say anything?
Well, I think my only negotiation point would be. If we had a mix of exterior materials, I would be willing to allow stucco as part of that. I don't want full stucco houses, but if we had, you know. If they wanted to have that as an element of the exterior, I'd be, I'm okay with that, but other than that, I think. Our our previous, we we need to have a new name for previous housing standards, but I think they're good, I like them.
Any more question for Steve? None, okay.
I guess we're willing to negotiate if.
It's offensive, Steve, he's just trying to keep us within the law. And.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we all want previous housing standards. That's why we had them, we wanted them. Especially for our A zone. Steve's doing his best to keep us. Keep us legal too.
Understandable.
I appreciate that, and I would just add to that by by having this this precedent, you know, as other people apply, I can just say. Technically, yes, you can ask for something else, but here's what happened last time, right? So that that just helps, helps me, so thank you.
So next week, when we, when we consider this. The housing, I mean, the development agreement is the last thing.
Correct, correct.
So should we just deny because if if you talk to the developer. And they are not willing to to do the previous housing standards. You'll let us know and we'll just deny, is that right, how we should handle it?
That would be my suggestion, right, because we wouldn't want to rezone the property without a development agreement.
Right.
Can we make those first two things contingent upon the development being signed, or is it?
So our, my suggestion always that we have the the development agreement would be voted on at the same time that the. The zone changes voted on, and so if, and at this point, I don't think the the applicant would be willing to. Do the previous housing standards, because that's that's essentially what the planning commission recommended, and he wasn't willing to sign it, so. But in the off chance he was, then we could amend the agreement and have that for the council for your consideration next week. My guess is he's not willing to do that, and so. So at that point, we likely just deny the the zone change at that point.
But he understands, if we deny his application, he has one year to come back, right? Is that right?
Right, the way the where the ordinance reads, if if a zone change is denied, then you have to wait a year to request the same zone.
Right, and he understand that, correct? Or he doesn't?
I'll make sure he understands it.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah. Resolution twenty two dash one five zero, I'm gonna go to Daniel Johnson. Mr. Pyle, do you have any one to say, anything to say before he taken over?
Uh, yeah, thanks, sir, the only thing I wanted to say is this is an item that comes to you regularly, I think it's annually, if I remember correctly. And is part of a plan committed to way back when we first started the storm water. Fee structure and it's stormwater fees, as you'll see on the fiscal impact on the issue paper that would pay for this. Other than that, Dan, hand it off to you.
Sounds great. Yeah, this is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with between the city and Salt Lake County for continued participation. In the Utah Stormwater Coalition and the work that they do. For a public information campaign that it's the, we all live downstream campaign that you'll see on buses and and commercials and on the radio. For stormwater education as part of our permit that we are, that we have with the state of Utah to discharge waters to the U S. Or discharge stormwater to waters, the U S. We are, one of the elements of 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 our permit is that we are required to do to do do public education and outreach. And so this is one of the elements that we that we use to to do that. And so we pay roughly twenty one thousand dollars per year, and this, under this agreement, we agree to continue this. Through twenty twenty eight, and they they price this based based on population, so they charge each city fifteen cents per resident. And so would be our recommendation that you approve this agreement.
Any question for Dan? That's. You're pretty good.
Thank you.
Good to go, thank you.
All right, and Nicole, if you could promote me for the next one here.
You should have a.
Oh, I sure didn't.
Mayor, you want to say something or?
Nope, sorry, I can mute myself.
Okay, good. Number seven right here. I didn't you again, is that right, Dan?
It sure is, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Not, we're not seeing it yet. Okay. Sorry. There we go. Okay. Earlier this year, we gave a presentation on the stormwater utility, or excuse me, got to change funds now, the sanitation fund. And one of the, one of the discussion points that we that we mentioned at that time was that sanitation fund was operating in a in a deficit. That the expenditures exceeded our revenue, and it was the council's desire at that time that you that we come back. And report on potential fee increase, and so that's the discussion we're having today is what that might look like. As a reminder of. From the previous discussion, this is a timeline, let me hide. So that. This is a timeline of our agreement with Ace Disposal, our disposal contractor. And with the contract began in twenty eighteen, and it's a, it's a six year deal with two one year extensions. And so within that contract are built in fee increases and some landfill disposal increases that that we know. And we anticipate, and and that's part of, again, the the growing gap between the the revenue and the expenditures. And so at the end of twenty July, in July of twenty twenty six, we'll have a a new contractor by then. And at that point, will there, the costs of the program are unknown. And a lot can happen between now and then anyways, and so, but between now and July of twenty twenty six, we have a pretty good feel for the cost of the of that contract. This out of your way too. Getting ahead of things. There we go. So this is, I'll take, let you take a minute to kind of soak this in. There's a left and a right, the left of this graph, the blue stuff is, that's a historic view of our expenditures and our revenue on top. And then the the red line at the bottom is a graph of the historic fund balance, the reserve, the savings account that we've had. Sitting in that, in that sanitation fund. And so that big green line is the revenue, which is and has been relatively flat for the last. While and we projected it's relatively flat, there, we'll get a little bit of new revenue from new customers and and additional garbage cans, but. But we don't anticipate that growing much. But the the growth in the expenditures, we we know they're built into our contract, and at this point. That that, you know, as time goes on, that gap increases, yes.
Can you tell us what the spike in expenditure were in eighteen nineteen?
Yep, so that big spike was the construction of the public works facility. There's about a million dollar outlay towards the construction of that building that was taken from the fund balance from these, from the sanitation fund. And and then this other jump in expenditures was a a program change that that added some worker, some cleanup crews. Pay for out of sanitation fund. To pick up litter throughout the city. So the the way that I've got this graph drawn, there's those expenditure lines kind of diverge a little bit. That's just to demonstrate a little bit of the unknowns, a little bit of the variability that exists in our expenditures. And then the the red at the bottom is. Is a, just a represent representation of the fund balance. And this shaded red area is what I'm kind of recommending, that's the area I'm recommending that we stay out of. I would prefer to not take the the sanitation fund balance below a million dollars. This will allow us to have just reserve funds for for who knows what, or. And our garbage cans are twenty five years old, and so we don't know what what can happen. And my recommendation that we keep that that reserve above a million dollars. And so this yellow line represents, if if you were to do a fee increase today, that's roughly kind of what it would look like from the, from the revenue side. And you'll you'll notice that it jumps above the expenditure line, which would is kind of where we like to see that, of course. And then it it takes that. That fund balance above that, it keeps it above the million dollar mark, at least through the end of our contract with Ace. So. Any questions with this? And then the the last slide that I have to show you. It'll advance maybe. There we go. Is, these are just some options for you to consider as a council, so the first option would be to to take no action, to raise no fee now or ever. And that would not be my recommendation, because ultimately that would result in a a reduction in services, which we do not recommend. You could make the decision to to increase fees now, and I'm recommending roughly a fifteen percent increase. If you were to do that, which would generate around nine hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. Then, so these numbers on the left, on the right, kind of indicate what that fifteen percent fee would in fee increase would look like. This, this first. This two dollars and thirty five cents, that's most of our customers, that's roughly twenty six thousand. People, homes that that have garbage and recycle cans, we have, we have some that that have garbage without recycling. And then the others represent additional garbage cans and additional recycle cans. And so it would take our fee from roughly fifteen fifty to seventeen eighty five of of a two dollar thirty five cent increase. And then another option, you know, we don't necessarily have to do that right now. You could push that off a little bit, but I would not recommend pushing past January twenty twenty four to keep us above that one million dollar reserve line, so. That really is my report, and if our Eric, our questions, I will gladly answer them.
Any question for Dan?
You keep indicating twenty twenty six, we end our service with with Ace.
Yes.
Can they not rebid?
They most certainly can, yeah, and we expect that they would.
You would.
Yeah.
Sounded like we've decided they're not going after.
No, no, we feel like they provide a good service, they're a great contractor, and we anticipate and hope that they would submit a bid on the next contract, but. Yeah, my my language there indicates that we don't know what twenty 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 six hold for us.
Can they opt out in these two years?
Uh, no, we can, they can't.
Okay.
I just had a question on a slide you didn't cover, but it was in the packet.
Yeah.
Comparing us to other cities, and we're not, not the highest, we're not the lowest, but there's quite a few that are higher than West Valley City. Are there services, I mean, some of these are really high, are there services that they're providing that are maybe not?
Yeah, that's a great question, every city provides kind of a different basket of services. And I really feel like we provide a great value for what we are providing. In Salt Lake City, for example, you can get a small, medium and a large can, and you pay punitive more the the larger the can. You know, with the intent to encourage you to use less waste and produce less waste.
How many gallons are our cans?
I believe there are ninety gallons, am I, is that right, ninety gallons? So I think we're comparable to Salt Lake City's largest can, if I recall. And so what we provide, so we we are recycle every other week, some cities are every single week. We have a bulky waste collections pro program that most don't have. And so if.
In the neighborhood dumpster.
And the neighborhood dumpster program, absolutely, and and in addition to some of the other. Like the the electronic waste and the the shredding event that we've done and stuff like that, it's included in this contract, and so. It's tough to do an apples to apples comparison, but. So, yeah, I don't know if that answers your questions or not.
The same jar? Can you explain to us about South Salt Lake, about the four, why they have this small? The.
Us, Bountiful is probably because they own the landfill, I don't really know. Why that is, you know, each, I I don't know the the details of their contracts, so. But my suspicion is Bountiful has, I mean, they're, they have a landfill and they're the owner of that landfill. What I understand and.
It was westbound, it's twice there.
Yeah.
Cost.
Yeah.
It sounds like it does look low.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I can, I can find out details of their service, I don't know what they provide. I don't know if they do recycling, I don't know.
Yeah, you can find it out, I appreciate it very much.
I can look into that.
Okay. Previous, previous decision points around this, we talked a lot about the situation with recycling. China not accepting.
Yeah.
What's that situation like now, or any projections?
Yeah, so that that's a a great question, there there were a few years ago that that. The recycling market kind of got flipped on its head. And we ended up paying a lot of money to to haul our recycled goods to the landfill. And paid a a surcharge to Ace, we basically did a contract modification to to pay a surcharge to Ace. To to get rid of that, what had become waste, because the market change. And it turned around a little bit, there were a few months within the last year. And it turned around a little bit. There were a few months within the last year that they were actually paying us a little bit of money back. For the value that they were getting for that waste. They actually didn't need to do that contractually, but they did it. And but prices seem to be falling again. And there's, that's, that is one of the elements of uncertainty in in some of our future costs is. What will be, will we be paying that recycle surcharge once again? And we just don't know. But my ant, my guess is that yes, we'll be paying it from time to time and. And it's, as I recall, I believe it showed up on our bill in a small amount, amount recently, couple thousand dollars. So.
We still ship all of our waste out to.
Most of it, yes. They take some, Ace has chosen to take some of it to the Salt Lake Valley landfill, but most of it. Gets taken to Ace's transfer station, compacted into trucks and and hauled down south of Eagle Mountain.
Because the fees at the Salt Lake one are are. Make that.
Yeah, when when our contract was negotiated with Ace, that was a better deal and and I, you know, and that's our contracted contracted price now. And and certainly that could be an element we discussed. There may, there may be some. Conversations of different waste site in future negotiations, perhaps in the last two years of our contract with Ace. So. But for now, yeah, it's going for a long ride.
Uh, in the bottom of that chart, you put down that West Lake City fees includes a. Bogey waste program and also neighborhood dumpster program. So I'm assuming. All the cities have the same kind of program there too?
Not necessarily, no. Most, I don't know of another city that has a bulky waste program. Most will have some sort of a neighborhood dumpster program. Usually a rental, you know, you pay a fee to get it. Ours is unique in in the way that we structure, that it's kind of done by a neighborhood. You know, you don't, you can't just request one dumpster at a time. And so most will have some version of most of those services, except for bulky waste. That one's relatively unique. I'm not aware of others that have that. But it's, it gets well used. We get a lot of folks that like to get rid of some big stuff and it's keeps you from having to save that stuff up in the yard.
So they have the same company, Southern Dame?
Some do, yeah. Ace serves, Ace Disposal serves quite a few of the cities around here, but Waste Management and Republic, other contractors also. They, you know, they'll intermittently, they'll, they all take their turns and get, win the bids, so. And some like, we saw like city, they pick up their own. And there's other cities that have their own garbage trucks that that provide that service to their, to their residents with city employees.
Well, you you're saying that seem like we have a a better deal than, and they have.
I think we provide a great service for what, for what we charge. Yeah, absolutely.
Good.
So.
So you have a decision from us on, should we recommend that fifteen percent?
Sure.
When are you going to ask for the decision?
Whenever you want to give it to us. There's, again, we, there's not a rush. You guys, if you wanted to. This is a a big thing for you to to decide upon and and they're really. You've said we'd recommend that it happen no later than January of twenty twenty four. So if you'd like to take your time, you can take your time.
We haven't had an increase since twenty eighteen?
Correct, in about five years.
That was a one dollar. Increase.
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem, oh Wayne has a comment, it looks like.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Wayne.
I keep trying to unmute his microphone, having some troubles.
I think the host unmuted me there. Thank you, whoever that was. I'm not sure what my problem was, but I couldn't get back to that window. I just wanted to emphasize what Dan really already said. I just was a little slower on the uptake there, Mayor Pro Tem. So. Yeah, when we originally came and did the presentation. Uh, we were fine at that time with no decision. We just wanted to. Give you a heads up and and make you aware of what would be coming in the future. If the council would like to change that now. Uh, that's fine with us. And if they don't, uh, that's okay with us too. So we're not looking for any decision or timeline other than what. Um, Dan asked for.
Thank you. Any more question for Dan?
I have one question.
Okay, man.
Just an idea, not, I mean, I don't know if it would be worth raising. One dollar, one year, and then one dollar the next year if we have a year and a half to do it, to kind of break it up. And ease into people's budgets. That would be my only idea.
That would be certainly okay with us. Again, however the council would do it, it wouldn't be a hard thing administratively to handle.
I think that very much. You're good to go, buddy.
Hey.
I think that, that's a good idea. One dollar now and a dollar later.
Did we act on that or do you want to think about that for a while?
You can act on it in here.
Nope.
We can say.
But if we prepare, we don't have a resolution prepared.
So. You want to do the early next year, like a strategic planning meeting, or you want to do it right now? Or which I'm tired of.
Wanted to do that, we could prepare a resolution that you could pass now that would not take effect until January first or a date you specify. Whatever you, however you're inclined.
So.
So we'll put it on our proposed future agenda.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. rapid, there's Eric, is that you? Okay. Uh, Mr. Pye, you want to say something before you're gonna take over or so, okay?
Only, only to reiterate why we are here, sir. Um, we have had a couple of truck. The common requests from the public here in the last little while, and I know at least a couple of the council members haven't seen this presentation before. So it was requested, but we also thought it it's a great time for doing a review of how we handle. These kinds of requests and what uh sort of criteria we place. To to not make the decision, but to make a recommendation to you, because in the end, what usually happens is. If uh if the information that we come up with warrants a traffic call me device, then we come to you as a council and ask for funding or. Or for you to uh make a decision whether to fund that or not. So. It's good review of how the process works. It's actually a pretty good process, I think, from a information data standpoint. So that's all I have, sir. Thanks.
Well, thank you so much. Uh, now go ahead, Eric.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, so this is the program we basically have been in place since two thousand and six. I believe it's when I originated it. So the current process is we get contacted by a resident to either telephone or. Email or website, whatever. Um, I have this form here on the, on the left side. That I send to them. Ask them to just fill that out, to get some of their neighbors to sign it and send it back to me. At that time, when I get that completed form, I'll schedule or put a work order in for a traffic count, traffic study. And then we go from there. What we collect is uh speed data. Uh, we put counters out on the street at at least one up to three or four, depending how long the street is and how many intersections there are. And we collect the speed data, traffic volume. We also look at sidewalks, if there's any sidewalks, um, what pedestrian generators there are. Elementary schools. Other schools, parks, that kind of thing. If it's designated bus or bike route that we 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 are aware of, then we'll we'll add some points there. And so we get these, this point criteria. So basically the way it's set up, if if you're eighty, so the eighty fifth percentile, that's kind of the key measure here. Um, the eighty fifth percentile speed, that's the speed where eighty five percent of the traffic is going that speed or slower. Okay? So any but anything above that's faster, obviously. So. I, in this case, the way the scoring is set up, if you, if your eighty fifth percentile speed. Is thirty miles per or thirty five miles per hour or above, so ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit. Uh, you pretty much automatically qualify for a speed hump project. Okay, means you have a major speeding problem, regardless of the traffic volume. Uh, below that, uh, kind of comes into the the other criteria is where that comes into. If you have a high volume. And your speed's around thirty, thirty five, thirty two, you can qualify fairly easily. Under that, under thirty, so five miles an hour. Above the speed limit and look and closer. You don't get too many of those that will qualify unless they have a really high volume. Some of the examples were back, the first big project we did was Diamond Summit. Uh, Wakefield Way was one of those that just had such a high volume of traffic. And the speeds were, I think they were between thirty and thirty five. Um, so it was kind of combination. So we did that whole neighborhood. Any questions?
Any question for you?
So right now, over the last five years, we've done about eighty two studies. Um, three of them have warranted. Speed humps. These were smaller ones, and so we had the funds to do those within our existing budgets. Uh, between our asphalt and transportation. Budget, class C roads, basically. So we did Chatterley Road, we did twenty three twenty south, uh, Oakham Mesa. Uh, qualifies, that one's kind of unusual. It's kind of a collector road that we typically might not do, but just given the nature of. The north segment of that with homes on it, and then there's. Some other features in that area that concerned us and. I I think it's a good place to do it. Um, we just haven't had the resources. Manpower essentially to do it in-house, and so we just haven't been able to get to it yet. So hoping to get to it this fall or next spring. Um, before we start a major maintenance projects. The other thing we, oh, and I should have gone back over this. So. So the point, the way the points work, so if you get a seventy five points or higher, you qualify for. Radar feedback signs. We've, we started those on Charles Drive, I think two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Um, that was our first project there. They were shown to be somewhat effective on slowing people down. So. What it does is it takes uh people like my mother-in-law who don't really pay attention to how fast they're driving. And it flashes at them and they say, oh, I didn't know I was going that fast. And they slow down. Um, so there's a good percentage. We went from on Charles Drive, our after study showed, we went from. About sixty five percent of the traffic speeding over the speed limit to forty percent. So it's it's somewhat effective. And we're gonna do, I'll talk about this in a minute, but we'll do another, we're gonna be doing another follow-up study here soon. So seventy five to ninety nine, get those. We found that. Just installing more speed limit signs or paint on the road doesn't do anything. Nobody pays attention to signs. Um, we can add a speed limit sign on every, everybody's house and it wouldn't change driver behavior. So it's those, that active flash or the speed hump. Those are the things we found to be most effective. All right. So currently, up to date this year. We've done, we completed ten. We got, uh, we've got a few in the queue right now. And we're gonna also, I'm, I, I occasionally I'll add some other streets in there that we've done before, just to keep an eye on. Changes if it's changed. One is is twenty eight fifty five west over behind Stansbury Elementary School. Uh, that's a big one. Uh, we put in radar feedback signs last year. Uh, we're gonna do a follow-up study now, school back in and go on. And get, do a comparison there. Another one I keep an eye on is Deanne Drive. Um, next, that's parallel to Chatterley, goes up to Hunter Junior High. Um, that's what I've been keeping an eye on as well. And just to see how, because typically on a speed on project, you kind of want to do the whole neighborhood. Right? Because you're pushing traffic through one street, maybe a parallel street. And and it didn't seem to do that on Deanne Drive. So we're gonna be doing, we did a new, a follow-up study this summer, but now the school's back in, I want to do another one. Uh, to see what traffic's doing now. So. Uh, here's a recent, recent example, this is Bonnywood Drive. Um, this is typically what I'll send to the applicant. As a results, um, I'll send one of these pages for each location. On the, this is on, this is our maintenance management software map. Um, so this is what we see, I see in my office. And uh, so that tells me the year it was done. The number of, the study number for that year, eighty fifth percentile speed, uh, traffic volume and the index score. So I can. Somebody calls me, I can say, oh, what street are you on? And I can look and see if there's been one done recently. And we get, these go back all the way to two thousand and six, really. Um, we have that data. These are our current speed hump locations throughout the city. A few of these predate my service at the city, but I think most of them are. After I came to the city. And then here's our radar feedback sign locations. That's what I have for you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, any question for Eric?
Most of these requests from residents and community members, or is there any data from? For example, police records that would also indicate a need for studying someone?
No, they're pretty much all uh community driven. I think I've had maybe a few requests from the police that they've gotten requests from community, now pass them on to me. But. Um, police does, they do have a a speed trailer that they put out. Occasionally in neighborhoods that uh it's a radar feedback sign on a trailer, basically. And so that they can move those. That around and and address different locations. And I'll get sometime, sometimes I'll take some of this data and if I see there's a speeding problem at certain times of the day, I'll pass that along to the traffic unit. I haven't done that too much lately. I haven't found too many, but in the past I've done that where I've, I've seen, you know, there's a specific time. Um, a couple hours throughout the day that they could target and and use it for.
And a, a night out event out by Diamond Summit. Two people brought up that their belief was that if there's speed humps on a street, that they won't get plowed. Is there?
No, our plows go right over them. No problem. That's the reason we use speed humps instead of speed bumps. Right? So in a parking lot, your plow will catch on a typical parking lot speed bump. The speed hump is designed to drive comfortably twenty twenty five. Um, go faster than that, you should get a good jolt. Depends on whoever installed them. One of the speed humps we put on twenty three twenty. Our guys were still kind of getting the profile right and it's a little steep. So you go, you can hit it pretty. At a decent speed and get a good jolt. But yeah, they don't interfere with plows, they don't interfere with emergency services. Um, and they typically. Um, slow people down pretty well.
Mayor Pro Tem, it looks like Mayor Ling has a question.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. So what is the cost of a speed hump and then for the flashing? Um, speed signs in a neighborhood?
I don't have the exact costs uh for the speed humps. I I neglected to get that from our last project in-house. Uh, it's, it, if I recall correctly, it was somewhere. It's, if I recall correctly, it was somewhere about. With a labor equipment and materials, it came out to about. What was it, three to five thousand per hump? I know when we did Diamond Summit and those were made out of concrete, but and that was a contracted job, they were back in two thousand nine. That was about seven thousand each. So that cost would be up as well. The radar feedback signs right now, they go about twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. So I can usually in my budget, my current budget, I can afford. About four to five sets. So we put, try to put them out in pairs, you know, both directions. So.
So if your scoring system does not allow for the city to put them in, can the community itself raise the money and pay for them to be put in?
I don't know, that's, that's a policy decision, I would guess. I'd have to defer to Wayne on that.
Yeah. Speak up to that, Eric. So yes, great question, mayor, and kind of in the past, what's happened is anytime those questions came up. The council themselves, the these stats are obviously a guideline and they're a good guideline and they give you a good solid reason to. Support or not necessarily support installing these traffic calming devices. But the council has in the past decided, hey, you know what, we're gonna fund putting a radar feedback sign here. Or yes, we would support it if you as a community are really serious about this, go out and get, you know, whatever, whatever the council said. All of you or seventy-five percent of you or whatever it was and. And to get support for that. I I can't remember us ever going back to them and saying, if you will raise the money, we'll do that. But we may have done that and it certainly wouldn't be out of the question. Again, I think the major point is the whole reason for the traffic calming process here is to give you guys a good. Basis from which to make those policy decisions, but the policies decisions are still yours.
Okay, because I have received concern where they were denied. And they still see the concern with the children and the speeds that are going past them and because they live there every day. They have a very strong opinion about it. And so that's what they were asking if they could just pay for it themselves because, you know, what's ten thousand dollars to them compared to a life of a child? So that's what I got told.
Right, right, yeah, and certainly understand hearing that. There is another consideration that we have run into other communities, which is they're not always necessarily united in their desire to have them or not have them. You might have one person that's really adamant about wanting it and the rest of the street or neighborhood, however is in mind at all. So that's something Eric tries to gauge as well when we do these studies.
Okay, thank you.
And that's part of the reason when I instituted this, I put that little mini petition, you know, ten signatures from your neighbors. To show support. That's part of the reason I did that. Because that's, it's a small sample, but it's a sample.
Yeah, I can agree with that. Thank you.
Just looking at the last five years, three speed humps and eight radar signs. It just seems low considering the the amount of feedback we get from citizens.
Yeah, we get it, we do a lot of studies that just don't meet the criteria.
So is our criteria too high or?
So. Granted, it's been quite a few years since I really looked deeply into the kind of the industry consensus. But this was based on, I, when I put this together, granted, it's two thousand six, so quite a while ago. I I researched what they're doing in the Northwest. Seattle, Portland type areas are very pedestrian friendly and even back then, especially. The Salt Lake Valley, what other cities have been doing, even the kind of the inter-mountain west and went into Denver. Phoenix areas and looked at their policies and and I kind of tried to find a balance because there's, it's, it's pretty broad. But as far as those thresholds go, I mean, that's, again, that's a, it's a guideline. I hold to those right now, but if if we need to adjust those, that's your prerogative.
Just a question, I mean, these are residential. Roads, are there tools available for like forty-one hundred south? Because I think you hear a lot of.
Th- those are tough. Yeah, we, yeah, those, I don't have a good answer, honestly. There, there probably are some things we can do. It has more to do with the feel of the road. People will drive as comfortable, as fast as they feel comfortable. Right? That eighty-five percent, right? There's always that fifteen percent they're gonna just do whatever they're gonna do. It's kind of been shown and it's not just in traffic, it's in life, right? So I don't really have a good. Way to slow people down on, other than maybe putting up some radar feedback signs on major streets. We've got some on Sixtieth West. Trying to remember. I'm not sure, yeah. On Sixtieth, we've got a few. I believe. Thirty-one hundred South, Red Drive. Twenty-two hundred West. Those are kind of the major roads that we've got those on. And, you know, my experience is, you know, people on on major roads are gonna speed. Where that wouldn't necessarily speed in neighborhoods, right? So. It's, it's a comfort thing for the driver. So there's, there's ways to engineer that through making our, you know, there's. All kinds of things in traffic engineering and planning and Steve and I have seen over the years of how we build our roads. To make them more pedestrian friendly and encourage people to slow and be more cognizant of their surroundings. But the way our roads are built, it's a little tough to do some of that. Usually takes a lot more right of way than we have.
In time parameter, how long does a study run to be able to gauge that?
So we put the counters out for one week. Right? So we go Monday to Monday usually, so I get weekend traffic as well. But you know, I I like to see the, we do them over the summer because that's the good weather. But I I really like to do them during the school year. Then we can see what's happening when that, you know, but during the summer, you know, our kids are out playing too, so. Just depends. So we'll do them as much as we can and typically we have radar counters now, we don't use our tube counters as much and so we can do them. On a clear day in the winter when the roads are clear. And get good decent data and we try to avoid holidays when we do them.
Mayor Proton, it looks like Mayor Lang has a question.
Yeah, mayor, go ahead, mayor.
Oh, thank you, Eric. I was just noticing on your list, you don't have any. Points given for a road that connects two major collectors. So maybe from thirty-one to thirty-fifth, a ma- a major cut through, you don't give any value to that. And on here. You're counting schools, so say forty-eight hundred West doesn't have sidewalk. And the main road that all the kids take to get to their schools. On a report I received from a citizen, you gave no credit for the schools. And there's actually five schools that are accessed from there. So maybe I'll have to just talk to you when I get back and we'll see how these reports are looked at.
Yeah.
Because in the past, I've, yeah, in the past, I've had concern when my kids were in school, so thirty years ago. About forty-eight hundred West not having sidewalk on the east side of the road. And I was told by Public Works, well, they use Staten Drive to get out to forty or thirty-one and then they walk to the school. But on your study, Staten Drive had no credit for being access, a walking access to schools. So that's what I'm kind of confused.
Yeah, I think what it comes down to is I look at the map and if there's a school physically right close by and so I I need to relook at that.
Okay, so we'll talk after when I get back. Thank you.
Eric, I I have one, one question for you. I don't know, this question gonna be for you or for Wayne? So you guys can help me out with this. Budget wise. How much money we set aside for this kind of a job on city?
Right now, right now, I have, I have a special project budget in my transportation budget. That goes towards this type of stuff and and signal, extra signal work. It's about fifty thousand dollars a year right now. And then I also have a traffic, kind of, we call it the traffic calming budget, but it's really just first radar. Feedback signs essentially and and some other sign upgrade stuff that we could potentially do. That's about fifteen thousand dollars a year.
So maybe you thought about sixteen thousand.
About sixty-five.
Fifty-five thousand.
Could go to this and then when we're doing, if we do a, if we're doing the speed like Chatterley and twenty-three twenty. Where we did this speed humps out of asphalt with our own. Employees, we'll, we'll pay for some of that out of that special projects fund and we'll, we'll pay for some of it out of our asphalt. Maintenance budget as well.
So sometime you don't use that money, you're gonna carry over for next year or or?
I typically use it all every year.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay. And with the demand right now, are you thinking you need more money for this or what are?
Right now, I don't believe so. I mean, I think we've been keeping up pretty well. If I do go over, it's usually I can cover it from. Another source within that fund that that can cover some of that. It's usually, it's not by very much recently. But again, we haven't done a lot of speed on projects. If that increases and we have to contract them out, that'll increase.
Thank you. Any more question for him? None. Okay, let's move forward to item C, council calendar. Thank you, Eric. Any question for council calendar? New business or a number eight, potential future agenda items?
Discussions tonight, probably a look at sanitation fee increases. Future agenda item.
Can we also add to look at the speed bump? Study paperwork as well, maybe add to that formula?
What else? How about the, the one with Scott Armahip writer about? Home enforcement, don't wanna follow up with that?
Did somebody make any comment on that, Mayor Proton? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. We do have that scheduled on the upcoming communications.
Yeah. Scott mentioned that. Yeah, thank you. Anything else? None. Okay, let's move forward, council report.
Ended the open house for West Valley Orthodontics. Last week. Got a beautiful facility there. Hope I never have to use it, but. But they've got a beautiful facility in there.
Great.
Yeah, anxious to serve in the community too.
Yeah, they got very excited, yeah. I came a bit late, I heard you.
Started to rain, so I don't, I left.
Smart.
And it stopped raining before forty-first, so.
All right, if not, we're gonna move to item number nine, a closed session. You have any? Close session tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we have the need for the, the quarterly litigation update. So a motion for purposes of reasonably limited or existing litigation would be in order.
Okay, you don't wanna call that motion?
So moved.
Yeah. Yeah, a motion, have a second? Right. Those in favor of this motion, Stacy, aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay.